Good evening, this is Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you. Anything you decide to screen share on your computer or anything you share will be broadcast and captured and recorded. This is Tom Sanford, Chairman of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. JT?
Here.
Timothy Wheeler?
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald?
Here.
And Tom Sanford. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, we will get to you when your turn comes up. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven forty PM Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive orders of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, Massachusetts, due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. Meeting ground rules, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I'll invite each board member by name to provide any comment, questions, penetrating insights, and or emotions. Please hold all your insights until your names called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Please speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you're yielded the floor and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each and every vote will be in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. Alrighty. So, the pay bills and mail, I didn't get the mail, so we don't have anything to open. I apologize, but life got in the way. So, our first contestant was going to be Paul Covaccio, but he emailed me earlier and asked that he be, that we postpone him until later on because he's still gathering information and doing soil samples and stuff like that. So he thought it was premature to come and talk to us right now. But he still would like to talk to us at some point in time, so. I said, sure, let us know when you're ready. So the seven forty-five slot, I pushed up for Steve Venakasa, who had contacted me earlier, who wants to continue his discussions with us about the alternative, the alternate to the affordable housing units, which was going to be at eight thirty, but we moved everything up, so we should be a few more minutes and then we'll, we'll, if he's in the audience, is he in the audience?
He's not. There is two audience participants. One is Peter Huffman and the other I don't recognize, so could be someone rapid.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll promote him when he, if he comes in and, and, because he said he would, he would be there at seven forty-five.
Okay.
And then the other thing, you know, we got a couple of, there's a capital planning request that we want to chat about. Some sign stuff, welcome to Berlin sign, and then any other timely items, and then we can. It was also, we should probably talk, there was some return, return decisions from the Attorney Generals about our approved bylaws. We can actually talk about that right now, we have a few minutes. So there was comments made by the Attorney General that we should consult with the, our town council to see if they, with the language is written and or the number of units for the liquor license versus the medical marijuana establishments or marijuana establishments, blah, blah, blah. We already checked all that out, so I don't see the need for us to go back and ask the questions again. Unless there's a, you know, I think we should just leave them the way they are. They were approved. Move on. If someone challenges it later on, someone challenges it later on. But I don't think we should go to the expense of checking again with town council.
So we rounded up anyway. If anyone were to challenge it, it would be to round down.
Correct. The question was the, whether you include all the establishments, including the ones that have pool licenses and restaurants.
I see.
Because that changes the calculus.
And the Attorney General wasn't able to advise us on that?
They said that, I think it's because they didn't have the count of our, what our number was.
I see.
So they punted it back to town council to say, just check on this type of thing. Because I don't, I don't know is if that's actually the way the calculus is supposed to written. I thought it was the number of liquor stores, not all of the establishments that have licenses, more licenses and stuff like that. Because what if you got a temporary license?
Right, well, not only that, it's like for like.
Right.
Right.
So.
There's no marijuana bars.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't include an alcohol bar.
Right. 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 So anyways, I, like I said, I think we're, we're fine and I don't think we should bother them and incur the expense.
Awesome.
I'm hoping we accept the minutes.
Second.
Okay.
One question, basically I get two questions on that. Was Jan, I don't, was Janet with us last time?
Yes, was. Partly.
But partly?
Yes, she was there for the first part of it and then she dropped out.
I don't have a category for that. I only have an absent.
Partially. I think you had her as present though, right?
I did.
Yeah, let's leave it because she was there when we first opened the meeting.
Cool. And the other thing is on item number three, I've said, I'm sure you remember. We were talking about the alternative for the Venkasa proposal, Kincaza. I had wrote down another is to build a hybrid and then my pen ran out of ink. So if you remember what that was.
You don't watch the Zoom meetings? You don't watch it on Zoom?
I was really, could have gone back and watched the video. I didn't think of that.
Yeah.
I'm going to leave it the way it is then. If someone really wants to know, they can go back to the video.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, we can accept them then.
Okay, so we have a a first and a second. Sorry, I'm having a tough time, tough time tonight. A motion and a second to accept the minutes as they were dutifully recorded by Jay. Is there any discussion, further discussion to this? Okay, seeing, and I will ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler?
Hi.
Carolyn McDonald?
Hi.
JT?
Hey.
And Tom Sanford? Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Jay. Okay, we're a few minutes past.
So Steve, Stephen's here.
Okay, can you promote him, please?
Can. Okay.
Can you hear us?
There you go.
Wow, that's even better. Excellent. Good evening, how are you?
Good, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, Steve Venakasa, my nephew Jim Venakasa. We're here to talk about the Highland Ridge over fifty-five community and we asked to to be able to use off-site group homes for the substitution of affordable housing. And we, at the last meeting, we presented you with some addresses, some places that.
Yeah, we sent you over the address for Thirty Granual Road, which is a home that we completed about a year ago. That's in South Road. Did you get the package that we sent? We sent, it had a couple pictures, five, six pictures of the house for an elevation and a layout of the home? Did, okay. So that's, that's similar to what we're going to be proposing each, each agency that we're working with, this, you know, they do their, kind of their own custom little tweaks to it, but their finess is pretty close to the, to the same house. The home that we're going to be looking to do is, it's a five-bedroom home for the offsite.
So that would be, that would be one home. We would need another, another location, another home to fully satisfy the requirement.
Yeah.
But we do have.
Yeah, since the last meeting, we did, we did, we did site a location for this, for the home. We did put a, there's a piece of land under agreement that we're working with now. It's, it's going into purchase and sale. But that's where we'd be proposing it. It's right on the Hudson line. It's the old, right over by Old Century Road. It's right next to the the, the gas station, which I believe is actually in, is the gas station in Hudson. Yeah, the gas stations in Hudson. It's literally right on the line. If the property line isn't the town line, then the
Next lot.
The next lot over cuts through the town line.
This is the one that's between the four ninety-five entrance ramp and the gas station?
That's correct. So it's, it has frontage on three roads. We'd be proposing this on the, on the rear load. I don't have rear, rear road. So I don't have the plan, site plan in front of me.
It's the lot that a lot of people use to park for Dunkin' Donuts, correct?
It's right next to that lot. It's right to the left of it. So you have the lot where everybody's parking now, and then it goes, then the right to left of it, there's the parts that we're looking at, and it goes up to those on those roads. Like I said, it's got frontage on three roads.
Where Shiro?
Across from Shiro, directly across.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was the old Morris property.
Yeah, it's old, so it's old Central Gates and then Gates Pond Road and sixty-two. So it has, it has frontage on all three of those, those roads. We would be accessing it off of Old Central.
What zone is that?
Um, not exactly sure on the zone, but with the Dover Amendment, we're actually, it's allowed to go in any zone. You know, they're educational facilities, so it's, you know, they are you know, educating when counseling the occupants of the home.
Believe it's commercial, Tom.
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah. According to this right here, it is.
Obviously, the, you know, on sixty-two and on Gates, it's a little bit more commercial, but you know, it is owned commercial, but on the old, old Central Street, there is other residential homes. They liked the location when we went over there because it's, it's good for the occupants, really for multiple reasons. You do have the shopping mall that's across the street so that they can take, you know, people up there and educate them on shopping and grocery shopping and you have BJ's, you have restaurants and stuff, so you know, they can take them through somewhere to, you know, get a sandwich and help them, you know, with ordering and and all of that. And then obviously have the Dunkin' Donuts right next door, which to my understanding is getting remote, getting torn down and rebuilt as a, as a new Noreo. So I think that's going to be a real big benefit to them to be able to do, you know, some minor shopping and, 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 you know, Dunkin' Donuts and ordering and stuff like that.
Do you have any plans or are you planning on modifying what you had provided us or are you that far along yet?
For how, the house plans?
Yeah.
So, the agency that we're working with over there, I think I can say it's Open Sky. Actually, I have a meeting with them at eight thirty tomorrow morning. I believe they're gonna just use our plan. We did send it to them. You can't say for sure yet. I'll know tomorrow definitely, but they were one of the agencies that worked, that have worked with it, that were happy with our plan. A couple, we, we have about five that we work with, some of them, they do change the plan, but as of right now, they were okay with the plan that, basically the plan that I sent you. That one, actually the one that we sent you, though, that one was a that one was a four-bedroom. The one that we will propose, it's the same footprint, it just changes the layout interior-wise to go to the five. But the footprint's the same.
So if this works out well, we'll do this house and then we'll look for another site and do another one somewhere else, but this is the first step. Try and see if this can work.
So we're, we're, we're doing this in a in a, in another town in Milbury, and I believe that we have the language that the town was using.
She's actually written into, into her decision that I'm doing this offsite with all and we can maybe share that language that she's generated on that. I don't know if it would be a help or not. I don't know. And you, you tell me, Tom.
So, so let me understand the, the, so you had, there was language that you used in the town of Milbury?
We, we didn't use it.
Yeah, the town of Milbury used.
Town planner.
Yeah.
Town planner used in the town of Milbury. Now, that was to satisfy a, your requirement with the town of Milbury?
Yes.
Correct. And was the, was the situation similar to what we have? You had a, you know, either a, you had a parcel that you were developing and the requirement originally was to have the affordables there and you're using this model and Milbury allowed you to do that with this language?
So, yeah, so the difference is that this is still being permitted. So it's written into the decision. We, we already have the permit, so we're kind of coming in after the fact on this one.
Right.
Still before we've, we're, I mean, we're just barely into construction. We're not, we haven't sold any houses yet, so.
Sorry to interrupt Sean. Sean Kinsell is in, I believe he's in the audience. He said, okay. I don't know if you want to let, if you could let him in. He said, text me, he said he was trying to. He can't unmute. So Sean, Sean works quite a bit, you know.
Tom.
Wait a minute, hold on, who's this gentleman?
Sean, he was on the meeting with us last time.
Okay, alright. He's the, he's the manager of the group home or?
Not really the manager.
Not really manager, but okay, he spoke with us before.
He did, yes.
Okay, okay, yes.
Yeah.
Can you relate to him, please?
Yep.
Hi, how are you? Sorry that I was having difficulty unmuting again. So I, I don't, I, I, I manage multiples of these programs. I won't be managing that one personally. That one will be Open Sky, who is a nonprofit agency that does a lot of these. You, just talking about the location, it's a, it's a perfect location because it's, it's residential enough to have a residential feel for it, but it's not too residential, so it has a, you know, some kind of urban aspects to it, which is really something that is very appealing for citing something like this. It's couldn't really be better. And it gives everybody a lot of access to the community, which is what they're looking for.
How big is the lot?
About a acre.
And have you guys brought this proposal before anybody else in town?
No. No, it's, we're, we're, we're just kind of finishing up the layouts and, and it's actually the doesn't, there hasn't been survey done there in many, many years. So we're actually in the process of gaining control over there and, and surveying it. We should have survey in a matter, you know, a week or so. Survey tourism is so backed up, it's been our biggest delay right now.
Carolyn, you mean, you mean other, other, other boards in Berlin?
Yeah, like the select board or our town manager or anybody else besides planning?
I, I.
ZBA?
I think all the permanent is so the permitting of the house itself is done to a building inspector. The, what we're talking about here, the substitution of affordable housing, is, I think is a planning board issue. Correct me if, if I'm wrong. I, I think it's planning board decision.
Well, I, the problem we're going to have is that is this going to be a substantive enough change that's going to force us to go back and seek you know, some input from the town. I mean, the town permitted this as an overlay and the, there was an affordable component with that. So now that we're moving that part of the puzzle around a little bit, does it warrant? Is it something that we can make the decision internally as a planning board or whether it has to go beyond us and then go back to either town meeting or you know, at least have some sort of input from other people besides us? So I don't think that's a question the planning board has tackled yet or even, you know, raised that, you know, yet. So I mean, you know, the idea is intriguing. But I, I don't know. I mean, right now, we've got a proposal for five. I know you said you're going to do another five someplace and you know, there's some stuff that we need to chat about before we unilaterally go and say, yeah, this is okay, go ahead and do it.
Well, the permit for the Highlands was granted through the planning board, correct?
Town meeting.
There was a town meeting, it was an overlay.
Because they did the overlay and you you're the one to issue the permits. Is it a special permit? Is that what it was?
There was an overlay that was granted and then that overlay allowed the development of, you know, the individual lots that were controlled through the building department.
Yeah.
So that didn't, that didn't come in front of the planning board?
Only for site plan review and location of the general layout of, of where the, where the units were going to be built. And then there was, you know, all the drainage calculations, the road improvement, all the roadway through and stuff like that.
But the actual allowing of the project was done at town meeting.
Correct.
Yeah. So it's, so would you consider it a change? Of the, so is it, is that, is that a change like it's either de minimis or major and whether you have a public hearing or not, or whether you internally decide? Is that, is that, those are the questions?
Right. So, so generally, when we have stuff that comes before us, if it's minor, then the planning board can act as their, on their own behalf and do it. If it's a little bit more than minor, then we elect to have a public hearing, get input from other people. And then if it's beyond that, then we, you know, take it back for reconsideration at the town, you know, as a town, town meeting. So where does this fall in that arc? I don't know. We, the board, the board hasn't talked, discussed this amongst ourselves.
As far as the permit goes, it wouldn't, so if you're providing, would it be de minimis on the fact that, because you're not changing, you're not changing the permit per se, because you'd still be providing the affordable housing?
But it wouldn't be available to Berlin residents. There would not be ten affordable units that would be available for Berlin residents to.
So we don't know how they are to.
Right, but so.
I'm.
Yeah, so Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, so what it is, is it's, so it's not, when we're building these, it's people that I, you know, they don't necessarily are, you know, from Berlin, but they're not necessarily not. It's people that want to live in Berlin.
Correct, but they, they could not live in the other units that you're proposing unless they had a special need.
Correct, correct.
Right.
So they were right.
Sure. So, so people, people are placed as close to their area of meaningful ties possible. So you know, it's like where they grew up or where their family lives. They're not just kind of randomly placed. It's, it's chosen to meet their social needs.
Right. So these, these, these could be people that were, you know, either like transited family from Berlin. They the few, the occupants get to pick where they're going to go. So the only, when, when we present it to the, the agencies, they have to run it through and say, are there occupants that are, you know, that are in a nursing home that want to live in Berlin? And then if there is enough of them, then they would be able to build one of these houses. And we did do that. We sent it in and there is, there's enough, you know, people right now that, that want to get into Berlin, but they can't because they have disabilities. So this does open the door for them to, you know, I don't know, you know, family who obviously can't tell you exactly, but you know, there's, there's a reason that they're wanting to live back in Berlin and they can't because of their disabilities. So this, I know what you're saying, that, you know, maybe not on a norm, the, the normal, the regular path that you used to, but these could be people that are, that, these are people that want to get back into Berlin or into Berlin.
And they could be residents. We don't know.
Right.
Well, their family members could be residents. It's not necessarily that they're residents, it's that they're, they have family members. It diversifies the portfolio of low-income housing serving a different demographic that is very underserved.
And you guys haven't talked to the Housing Partnership?
No, we thought this was the first step.
Okay. I'd like to hear what the Housing Partnership has to say about it too. If anything. I mean, I'm not saying that it's not a good idea. I just like to get a little more input.
We, we thought you were looking, we thought generally you were looking at it favorably. We, we know there was no votes or anything taken, but we thought it was favorable conversation.
Right.
Is that accurate?
That's accurate. I mean, we, when we we, we had, we had a present, presentation and we had Sean had.
They were, they were going to come back at our next meeting and they didn't.
Right.
For some reason, I didn't have.
We put this on the back burner.
Yeah.
I didn't have that written down.
It was months ago that we talked about this.
Which July?
July.
Months ago.
September.
Yeah.
Thirteen. Okay.
And I assumed that it was something that you would consider, decided that it wouldn't move forward and didn't come back to us as a result. And now we're here again, so we're starting the clock again. Seven twenty-four point seven, Planning Board Action. Number five, the degree to which the proposed development would contribute to the supply of affordable housing in the town. And that's the issue that I'm going to look at. You know, we're talking about the replacement of ten units of affordable housing for families. A percentage of those are for families that are receiving or earning fifty percent of the mean, median income and then the rest are at seventy-five percent. And we're erasing those ten units and replacing it with ten bedrooms for ten individuals as opposed to ten families. To me, that's a significant change in the plan that we were first presented. And as a result, at the least, I think we have to reopen the hearing process and get public input. at the least, I think we have to reopen the hearing process and get public input. And I think we have to go to town council and ask if the modification is significant enough, so we really need to go back to the town meeting and ask for approval at town meeting for the overlay in the first place, because in that overlay, people understood that ten units of affordable housing were going to be built in the project. And now we're erasing those. And and to me, the planning board can't take on that responsibility without at least reopening a public hearing process and getting public input. And again, I think we got to ask town council whether we really need to go back to town meeting and vote on the overlay with this modification, because it's significant in my mind. It's not, it's not a minor modification by any means, the way I look at it.
We could look at it that way. And then the other way you could look at it is that your affordable requirement is being kept is is the same through the state. So the unit count through the state is the same. So there's
Our objective with creating the affordable inclusionary zoning was to create housing for families is the way I've always interpreted it.
Right, not just to match numbers.
Right. And and we're we're impacting the potentially a significant number of individuals by not making this type of affordable housing available. And the other notion in our bylaw was that it would be inclusionary. It would be included in housing projects. And Berlin, unlike a lot of other towns, the way we've built our inclusionary zoning, we don't allow for modifications at this stage to allow people to pay in lieu of or build offsite, you know, there's, there's no language in the affordable inclusionary zoning section that allows for that. I mean, I'm trying to go through it again now and look at it to see, you know, am I wrong? Or, you know, is that really the intent when we first wrote it? And that was my impression. So I'm I'm trying to refresh my memory here. Which again is another reason I think we need to continue to look at this a little deeper and have some discussion with the Housing Partnership, the town administrator, the selectman and and town council.
So I guess, you know, I I hear what you're saying as far as this was was for, you know, initially intended for families, but I I do think that it is also a good thing. If you're help, you know, we are helping people come into here with disabilities and and, you know, although they may not be moving in with their family, they are moving back, you know, or into the town that they want to live in and a home that they they can live in rather than, you know, being in, you know, the place that they're at. Although, you know, you say it's for families, but you know, these the individuals that are going in here, they they want to live in the town too.
And if they have family members that want this to go forward, we'll hear from them through the process.
They don't know. I mean, you're not gonna, you know, if that was
Sure, of course. If if somebody can have their family member live closer, you haven't been to many Berlin town meetings if you don't think they're gonna show up. Uh, because they will and they will make it known and then we'll hear from them and then it will go forward. But I don't believe that is our decision to make.
I I I, you know.
Doesn't work that way.
Yeah.
In in what? Why?
These people with disabilities, they're not, they're not.
No, they have families. You're saying that their families live in town that want them to be closer. And so those people will certainly come to town meeting.
Yeah, to say that, you know, that your family should, you know,
Should rally.
Rally around you at a planning board meeting to try and get somebody to build a home that's looking to build for you. It doesn't
All right, well, then I I am one hundred percent in agreement with Tim.
This, so this is done in a number of different towns and and for the most part, it's worked.
Yeah, but you
Maybe this is not what you envisioned it and maybe this is not what that you think is a good idea, then then so be it. You know, I I I don't want to propose something that I don't have your support on, bottom line. I'll have your support. When I'm moving forward.
We would, I personally would prefer to see the ten units included in the project that you're building.
Okay.
That is my personal opinion. There are
That's fine. And and the rest of the board members, they feel the same way or not? I don't know.
I I think I want to hear a little bit more before I, you know, make a decision.
Okay, we'd love to give you some, I'd love to give you some more information about it. I mean, it's a great, it's a great thing that we're doing. I I think that, you know, you know, I'm sorry that you don't feel as though it's it's this is a, this, you know, this, there's a big need for this. I think that, you know, it's a great thing.
That's not what I said.
Yeah, that's not why
I don't know. That's kind of the way, sorry if I just, if I didn't take that the appropriate way, but it's kind of ways portrayed, but it it, you know, I do think this is a great thing. I think that if if there's a way to offset the costs in order to get this to happen and we can build homes for people that are, you know, in need for homes. Then I I think it would be a great thing for the for the town, for everybody, but
If you want to build, if you want to build the the project that you've got the agreement on the land, if you want to build that also, I think that's a fabulous, fabulous idea. But that is not the purpose of our affordable housing bylaw. That is not the purpose of it's not, we're not in the business of trading those one for another. But that's not to say that I personally don't support having a home like this in town. I don't support it in lieu of.
That home won't get built unless it's traded. The economics
That's unfortunate.
They're way out of balance. So if this program can't work through the planning board, it's not gonna work. I'm sorry. And and
Yeah, I mean, that's how we even
That's bottom line.
Yeah, I mean, that's how it's and and other towns. It's just, you know, it's it's a big, I think a big benefit to everybody, but
If you don't see it that way, you know, I don't, I don't know, John, I I don't know what more information. John is the expert in this area. So I don't know if there's other questions or other comment John can make that that you would want to hear from him. Otherwise, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the these are expensive houses because they have to be pretty much tailor made for individual needs. So things like the bathrooms are bigger and they have to all be built at grade level so that people can evacuate. There's, you know, there are there are higher safety needs within the house. So they're expensive. They're they're more expensive than a typical house. The demand for these houses significantly exceeds the supply. And also, you know, the speed at which they can be built because they, you know, take a long time to come online and there's, you know, hundreds of people waiting for them throughout Massachusetts and more people coming on to the waitlist as you know, we're trying to move people out of nursing facilities who don't need to be in nursing facilities. They're just there because there's nowhere else for them to live. But they're expensive and as a provider, it's too expensive for me to, you know, build and then operate one of these houses without some kind of supplement. And if we don't have some kind of supplement, then we end up with a compromise that doesn't work for the individuals that are gonna live there. And they end up kind of being bounced around until they land somewhere that can satisfy their needs. But where we've been able to get the supplements and build what we actually need, those programs, those houses have been incredibly successful. And that's something that we're trying to replicate.
So I'm, I'm kind of interested in in seeing some backup to the things that you just said, Sean. You say that it's you say it's very expensive to build these houses, but you didn't say how much that is relative to what you're currently obligated to build? I'd kind of like to see some information to support that. And then I'm trying to figure out how the rest of the transaction works. And it sounds to me like you're selling this property to someone who's gonna offer it and financing it. So that ends up not being the same cost and contribution to the town that you would be giving us if you built ten units and sold them at a lower price, right?
So we're not selling these. They're renting.
What I read was
It's a, it's a cap, it's a capital lease. It becomes a donation.
It's donated. It's donated to them.
That's not, didn't seem to be what I what I saw or heard from you before. It sounded like they were essentially paying it off over twenty years or something. Isn't that right?
Yeah, it's a capital lease.
It's a capital lease.
And it's sold for one dollar at the end.
But at the end, they've already paid for it over the course of the twenty years. I mean, when you say capital lease, there's no principal. It's only interest. Is that what you're saying? Or what does that mean? It looked, looked to me like you were selling and financing it and and or it's a lease with that gets all the way to the end and and is bought out for a dollar, but that's
They can, they can, they could decide to take it really at any point. They could decide, they can, it doesn't, they don't have to go all the way to the end. They can take it at, you know, at any point of their lease. And it does pay, it pays down. I mean, they're paying a lease, but it's, it is paying down. And then at any point, they could decide to buy it and then whatever that difference is between the value of that is, it is donated.
Right, but you're you're essentially receiving the full value of the property over the twenty years, right?
No, no, because even, no, because on the, it's it's discounted off from from the discount on the number for the affordable housing component. And that's what reduces down the cost of it.
Well
So if it costs X and it's X minus, you know, the donation and then that's amortized out, I guess. Is that the question you're asking? I guess at the end, what are you trying to, I guess, what are we trying to? What, what do we
We're talking
I'm trying to answer the question for you. I was trying to figure out what what the question really was. You could, is it the concern of?
You're talking subjectively about the economics, but we haven't seen any numbers to support it. So we don't we don't know what what value the town is getting.
You're getting the same exact numbers that you're getting for as if, you know, as if it was any other project. You're, you're, the town's not if if we, if Steve builds a unit and sells it at the affordable number, the town's not getting anything out of that. They're just getting their affordable housing credit, correct?
That's one component.
And I'm, 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 we worked to this. So I'm just, I'm just asking is, so, you know, and say if if the housing, if he sells the unit and it's two hundred and fifty thousand or whatever the number is that he sells the unit for, does the town get any of that?
Essentially, yeah, because because there's a contribution there. There's a clear contribution that the rest of the units are selling for five hundred thousand. This one sells for two fifty. That costs, that's two hundred and fifty thousand that you've contributed in this project times ten. So with these other units, if if the thing that you're building, you know, if if the if the contribution you're saying you're making with that is is equal or close to equal, then that part of the issue goes away, but
So it turns out that it's
that it's way less expensive to build two units instead of ten and that and that you're able to sell them as sense, sell it essentially at market rate or whatever, because you're leasing it for twenty years. You know, you've got a, you've got a lease that gets bought down to zero at the end of twenty years. It's like a loan, right? Like a mortgage, then we're not getting, you know, we're allowing
Keep saying we're not
requirement to get diminished.
I know, I guess I don't like, because you keep saying that where the the town's not getting it. When you do afford it, does the town get any? Are you asking from, are you asking for money?
Yeah, we get, no, we get, we get units available in our town at half the price of the of the other ones. That's what we get.
It's individuals.
They're half price.
But the individuals get the benefit and you're getting the the housing credit, correct?
The difference is that at one point, it's it's a family and the other point, it's a disability.
It's a person with disabilities.
A person with disabilities. That's, that's the difference. Who benefits? A family or person with disabilities and
Is it the person?
Well, that's one, that's one way to look at it. That's one, that's one part of the decision. But the other question is if it costed, it costed, you know, two hundred thousand dollars each to build ten units. You know, that's two million dollars, right? And and if this other project only costs you one million dollars, then
It's it's hard for the land to, if if economics bother you or
I think for, I don't think we should be ignoring the economics. I think that's a responsibility is that we we've there's an agreement that that's been made to have you contribute a certain amount of value. And I I think we just want to feel confident you're contributing equal amount of value with the other proposal. That's all.
Okay.
So you don't have an issue with people with disabilities getting the benefit? Because was it, is it the issue of a homeowner getting a benefit or a person with disabilities getting a benefit? Is that what the issue is?
That and this particular topic, no, it's not. That's, I'm just talking about economics.
Okay.
I mean, there, there are a number of parts to the decision. That's one of them is who's, who do we want to benefit, right? But this is what I'm, I'm just trying to
I think it's a good thing to have the people
Trying to say that we're, that we're getting equal value, right? That you've you've agreed to make this, you know, whatever you want to call it, contribution. I'm trying to weigh how how the contribution is similar or different in the other proposal.
You you just want to know what what the contribution that the project's gonna be making towards the home that we're gonna be building? Over that we're proposing to build. That's what you're, is that, that's what your question is?
I'm gonna try to figure out with your help what is really costing you to do what we've, you know, we've agreed to do versus what this is gonna cost you and see that they're at least reasonably close. Because otherwise, I think you know, there should be a great, good reason for us to agree, agree to less. I think it's irresponsible if we're not aware of it and we don't consciously you know, give away some value that's been agreed to. So one way is you could provide us with numbers to support that. Another way is we can get someone else to estimate it for us.
I can provide it numbers. It's not a big deal.
And that's, that's one part of the process is is the numbers, I guess. So there's more to it. And and you either look favorably upon it or you don't.
What's it?
I said, you look favorite, if you don't look favorable upon the concept, then we're just wasting each other's time. We don't, we shouldn't even go any further. If we like the concept, then we could go down and dot all the i's and cross all the t's, go through the whole process. But if you don't like the idea to start with, you know, let's just cut to the chase, bottom line.
I'm kind of, I'm indifferent on it.
You're indifferent?
Yeah, I'm, I, you know, because I don't want to be a party to um make a bad economic decision, but as far as whether it's affordable housing for families or for the proposal you've made, I mean, I'd like to hear other opinions. Basically, this one, I'm indifferent.
We're happy, if if we like the concept, we're happy to provide all the economic data that we have. But if we don't like the concept, then again, I I don't know why you, why, why that would matter. If we don't like the concept.
You're muted. Tim, you're muted.
My position is that I'm, I'm comfortable with the concept, but I'm not comfortable with the process. And I I want to determine whether we have the planning board the authority to go ahead and make this type of modification. So I need advice from the town administrator, the Housing Partnership and town council and probably the selectman to get a sense as to whether this board can make this decision independently or whether we at least need to open up the public hearing process again and get public input, because to me it is a modification that's major, not minor. Major, not minor. And I think from town council, we need to determine whether. The way the inclusionary zoning bylaw reads. Um, we can allow off premise. Affordable units to be substituted for those that are supposedly going to be included in a, in a project. And. Again, that's a major leap in my mind. So. You know, I, I, like I said, you know, two months ago, I think we all said. Um, we saw merit in the notion of having. This type of affordable unit built in the community. If we've already got one group home in town and, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's an important part of the, the housing mix that exists here. But. The question in my mind is procedural, you know, do we? Make a decision to modify what we've agreed to. Do we have that authority first of all, and? Then I'd like public input as to whether it's appropriate. Um, because I need some guidance from folks as to. You know, whether they see inclusionary housing included in projects of this scale. As crucial and critical, or whether they think the substitution is an option that the town ought to pursue. Um, and I don't have a clue right now as to where the town would stand on that, I have no idea.
So we're, we're, we're doing these in other towns through the planning board and, and I recognize that every town is set up a little differently. Um, and I, and I don't know exactly, not familiar with all your. Other processes that, that you utilize in Berlin, so. I'm doing this in other towns through the planning board, and that's why we, we took this route here to go through the planning board. The other thing is that, the other thing that's driving us is that. Um, since two years ago when DHCD said that you have fifty-five communities. Had to include families in an over fifty-five community. Other communities have said, no, that, that, that they're not going to do that, that they're going to do offsite. Now Berlin has taken a different position and said that we will allow. The families, ten families to live in the community. I have not done, I've done, I've done probably five or six over fifty-five communities, I've not done any of them. I'm a little concerned that, that, that it's going to work out, and because generally people move into over fifty-five community. To be with other empty nesters, they're empty nesters, so um. If it doesn't work, we'll do it, it'll be the first time I did it, but I thought this was a good alternative. To introducing families into an over fifty-five community is to do offsite housing. Now again, if I don't get all the support of this board. This, this is kind of, this, without, without pursuing this any further, this is it, so. I thought it was a good idea, if you don't think it's a good idea, or you don't think you can do it. Then so be it, you know?
Yep, when we went to the town meeting and asked them to modify. The language in the over fifty-five overlay. To provide for individuals under the age of eighteen. To live there, um, it was specifically designed to deal with DHCD's. Guideline as the, their, their notion that there needed to be provision for. People under eighteen to be able to live in an over fifty-five if it was going to be considered an, you know, an affordable unit. So that was clear, and we went to town meeting and said. This is the direction that we feel we ought to go, and town meeting overwhelmingly supported that. Um, so again, I, I, I don't feel comfortable. Um. Making a decision that in my mind is, is significant without. Following some process that allows us to get input from town council, housing partnership. And the board of selectmen. As to whether they feel we have that authority, and if, if everybody says bless your heart, you do. Then, you know, we can continue the dialogue. You know, one of the things that we talked about, um, I think Eloise may have suggested it. Was that, you know, build one of these uh. Group homes right on your own site, um, and included in your project. Rather than trying to find two sites within the town to build. Two offsite projects. Um, and, and then there was also discussion about building five affordable units in the project. And only building one, um, you know, group home offsite, so. There's a lot of opportunity here to, you know, explore, but I, I don't feel as though. I'm in a position to decide. Whether or not, again, we have that authority. And that's where I think we can do some homework between now and our next meeting. Because I would think we could get the housing partnership to chime in and we could get the town administrator and the uh. And the selectmen, and we can get town council to give us some thoughts on the matter too.
It, it may turn out to be an option, I mean, obviously, we, we can't get council's opinion, but. Would you like us to go to the housing committee and the, and if you want us to follow up with that, we, we can do that or? Or is that something that you guys can do?
No, I think it makes perfect sense for you to go to see housing partnership.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then would you be following up with town council, or is that something that, or can you let them know, or, yeah, you can follow up?
Yeah. At some point, I'll make a motion that we pursue this with town council and get the board to. Agree or disagree, you know, I mean. So, and then we'll go to the selectmen and ask permission to go to see town council.
Is, is that something you'd be able to do now, or do you, how, how do you want to proceed with this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go to the selectmen and ask to go to town council to get some review on whether we have the authority to do this.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion to this? While we're talking to them, can we include our town manager? Some input from her as well?
Yep.
Okay, so seeing no other. Hands raised for discussion about this, I'll ask you to vote on this motion, uh, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. So we'll go, thank you, that carries in unanimous, we will go and we'll pursue that part of it. If you guys can go and talk to housing partnership. And see if they're, get their temperature and see if they're uh. Whether they'll support that and. And reconvene at our next meeting if you guys want to, that's.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Twenty. What is it, Jay, twenty-eighth, twenty? Twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same time, seven twenty-five.
Uh, if you wish. Okay, I'll include you on the agenda.
Alright. I appreciate it.
I uh, apologize for missing your last meeting, I didn't have it in my iPad. It falls during the summer and there's a lot going on during the summertime and. Just didn't have it written down, was not for lack of interest. I missed out.
Can, can you share the, uh, would you be willing to share the language you're using with, uh, town of Millbury?
Yeah, it's, it's language that she created, and I didn't create it, and I just thought it would be helpful.
So, so just so I'm clear, that project is not, it, it hasn't been permitted yet, so it's still in the planning stages, correct? Okay. Okay, yeah, if you guys are willing to share, then that will help us and, you know, we can share it and see if it streamlines the discussion.
So that project is, is, is the same as we're doing offsite affordable, but it's a different type of project, it's actually. An apartment project in a downtown area, so it has other components that are in there, so it's. Not quite apples for apples, but it, it's, it's the same as far as.
Same concept.
Our concept is the same.
Yeah, that's what I think we're looking for is.
Yeah, it's a different project, but it's the same concept.
I want you to think it's exactly the same, it's not.
No, 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 but the concept is similar.
Yes, yes. And, and we're doing this in Bellingham also, um, but in Bellingham, it's, it's like you're written into their. Into their bylaws or their permits, so it's much more straightforward, uh, in Millbury it was not. Um, in Shrewsbury it was not, so we're going through town council, Shrewsbury, it's, it's a little bit more arduous. Over there also, so. It's a little different, it, it, it's, it's different and it's a little challenging. Um, and we think it's a good idea, a good concept. And if we get your support, that's great, if we don't get your support, we'll do what was, uh, what was originally permitted. Not a problem either way.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, great.
We'll see you on the twenty-eighth then, thank you very much for your time.
Yep, thank you. Okay. The um. Next item that is on the agenda, do we have any capital planning requests? I know that we had. Not did it last year, we were looking for some um, money for our. Do we pull it? We were supposed to put something on capital and we pulled it. Because we said we had some money and what the lift, you're on mute again.
The master plan money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't put that in last year.
That's capital money?
They asked us to put it on the capital expenditure list.
Yeah. I'd ask for it.
Okay, so we got to figure out how to get that done, because there's a deadline to that.
Carolyn knows.
Yeah, the deadline, the deadline I think is November or something.
It's early November though, isn't it?
I think so, yeah, like the eighth or sixth or something.
Oh, oh, maybe I'll look.
So that will be the, the five thousand dollars?
Yeah, why not?
Really? They're asking you to put that in as a capital.
Expense.
Expense.
We.
In my re, in, in my recent reading of the capital planning bylaw, it was projects over ten thousand dollars.
I thought it was because it was a reoccurring expense, we were doing it year after year after year.
That could be. Why they asked you to do, like, it's not a one-time five thousand dollar.
No, and what we did, we did it so that we didn't have to hit, you know, everybody up for forty, fifty thousand dollars every five years. We just, uh, we did it in small increments and that way we just did a little piece of it every year.
Um, we have an audience member with their hand up. Mister Peter Hoffman.
Um, okay, can you elevate Peter, please?
Hey, everyone, how are you?
Hi Peter, how are you?
Good, so I looked into some of the rules of the road that you're talking about, I think the November first deadline that you're talking about is for the special town meeting. Not for the annual town meeting, and I think you're talking about a budgetary request for the uh, annual. Meeting in May, right?
Yes, that's what we were talking about, but I thought that they were looking for the. First cut of the worksheet or whatever they were trying to um, put together. Um, there was a quick deadline and it was in November sometime, and they were looking for the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I, I could be mistaken, but I have some of the impressions, November first, the special town meeting, but. Something to clarify, that's all.
Yeah, well, it, the ca, capital expenses wouldn't be for the special, would they?
No.
Please return all completed forms and associated documentation to the town administrator on or before November first. All capital requests submitted after November first will be considered for the current years. Will not be considered for the current year's fiscal budget and will need to be resubmitted for the following year. So, as, as a result of they're beginning the budget process.
Right.
Soon. Um, because they have to have. Their budget pretty well put to bed by the first of the year. They're asking for any capital requests by, uh, the first of November for the annual town meeting. Capital is defined as major non-recurring. Tangible assets and projects which are purchased or undertaken at intervals of not less than five years. Have a useful life of at least five years and cost over ten thousand dollars, so. If, if, it probably makes sense for us to have a conversation about this again. Um, because. This does, we, for a while, this was a recurring. Um, undertaking. And it was cost less than ten. And uh. How do you measure the useful life of a, of a plan, you know, so?
I can ask the question.
Yeah.
All I do, I remember that we. Was asked to put it on their capital expenditure list and we pulled it last year and.
Yeah.
I figured this was. Timely to come up for a discussion, so we can get our, I just didn't want to miss the deadline and then not be able to do anything.
No, and I think we should. We should go after the ten again, I think we have to get serious about um. Um, the open space plan is, is a year old, the, the housing production plan will be new. Next year. So those are fairly recent, but the umbrella again is lacking and um. You know, we need a concerted effort to. Work on that, and that's going to, you know, cost us a few bucks, might cost ten or twelve thousand, fifteen thousand, and we've got some money built up. But uh, I think the extra five would give us the cushion we probably need.
You want to go for five or ten?
No, I think five's fine, because we've, we've got those other two. I think we've, we may have, we've got five in reserve already and we may even have uh, ten. The, the housing production plan will come out of the. Housing partnership funds, but uh. This other word.
Spend some, but that um.
Yeah.
So we don't have quite the ten that we think, but.
I mean, we will, you know, we, way back, we were gonna work with Tanner and uh, he's disappeared from the face of the earth, so. There's, there are other players out there, um. You know, Judy Barrett. And is still doing work, they just worked on uh. Something for Harvard, I think. The Assam Regional Housing Collaborative met today and uh. You know, I had brought up the group home issue with them and, and they. Said, you know, their thought on the matter would be the, the bang for the buck would be the, the. You know, the houses can, you know, contained within the project and built for families, but uh. And, and that didn't mean they didn't see merit in the, the group home stuff, but uh, in terms of the benefit to the town, they really thought. There was probably more benefit gained by uh. Going the route that we'd already agreed to. Um, but again, I can, you know, you can envision a hybrid where, you know, might do five and five, you know, five offsite, five onsite, that sort of thing.
I just don't like the swap. You know, if they want to.
Yeah, go ahead.
If, if they had. A, if it was the beginning of the conversation, not the middle of the conversation. I might feel differently about it. But the town agreed, as you pointed out, the town agreed to ten house. Uh, ten units being included for families in this project. And who knows how many people that swayed to vote for it. It's a little bait and switch at this point.
So yes, five thousand, I think we should. Talk, you, if you talk to capital planning about that, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
And, and yeah, again, review whether. The procedure that they want us to follow is.
Yep.
By the book.
Okay. The uh, next item that's on the agenda is the welcome to Berlin sign.
Uh, someone named Jason Roswell has their hand up.
Um, okay, in one sec, okay.
Oh, sorry, hit the button before you.
That's fine.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good, good evening, guys. Uh, I, I'm with, uh, uh, Peter Hoffman here. Um. And I had been tasked with, um, putting together a new sign project, uh, for the town of Berlin. Um, we were working on three or four different locations around the, uh, perimeter of the town. And we came up with a first, um. Location at the community garden and I've spoken with Carl and the agricultural folks and. Um, Carl seems to think that they'll be, um, okay with this location. Uh, I do have a PowerPoint. I could just share a couple of slides if you wanted to give me access to share.
Sure. Can we do that?
Hold on, I, I think I need to elevate him to panelist. All right. So hold, hold on, Jason.
No problem.
Do that. And then we're gonna do that. That should give you the ability to share.
He's muted right now.
There you are.
You're muted.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Uh, let's see if I can share my screen here. Can, uh, you guys see that?
Just Jeff.
Oh, maybe now.
Now we can.
Excellent. So. So I'm with the economic development committee. Um, I joined not too long ago, um, about a year and a half ago. Uh, working with Peter Hoffman and the team and, and driving around town, we were talking about the, um. Community and when do people know when they've entered the community and what does that look like and how do we, um, kinda, kinda help with that? And, uh, I was tasked with kind of coming up with a, a new welcome to Berlin sign package. And we have been granted some money to spend, but, uh, I don't know if we're gonna need to spend it because we're sponsoring these signs with local businesses. Um, so, uh, I had been working with Richard for the building inspector. Um, as far as, um, what did I need to do to put this together? Uh, and the next, uh, step was to get with you guys. Um, so the slide here just shows you the kind of the size of the sign, um, what we're looking to put. Um, and the first location we thought would be over by the community garden. And through the plot layout, uh, initially I wanted to put it closer to the driveway. Probably like 20 yards, I guess. Um. I think that would be north on, uh, River Road there, um. And 10 yards off the road, uh, but after going and looking at the plot layout, I thought down closer to the culvert, um, that cuts under the road. Um, a little further away from the garden might be a better location. Um, so. I've come to join you guys to understand what the next steps are, what information you need from me. Uh, what do I have to do to get approval from you? Um. Have an open discussion.
Do we, um. Tim, do we have to waive the dimensional sizes of the sign? Can we do waive that? Cause it's bigger than what is permissible by our bylaw, right?
Yeah. So what, tell me the dimensions again. See, what is it? Four by four?
Uh, yes, essentially 44 by 48.
There already are some signs, right?
There, there is a couple of small signs we discovered while we were driving around.
Yeah, the Lions Club had put those up, um, a number of years ago.
Yes, those are.
Uh, they're probably two by two. There's one relatively close to. Where I live, so.
Yeah. And, and, um, on those have been attached signs such as, uh. Community-supported agriculture. You know, because we voted that, one of those towns is a sign that says that. It may also say green communities that that designation may be on that sign too. Do you envision those other signs being included at any point on this sign?
Uh, not necessarily. Um, one of the things we talked about is, you know, trying to work with the local businesses is, is getting these signs sponsored. Um, so, um, letting their business title be kind of on the sign. Uh, it is a changeable part of the sign. So we had thought that it would be like a five-year kind of donation. Uh, we're not doing this to drum up money for the town, but we didn't want it to be a permanent, uh, donation for the signs.
Um, right. So if, if your sign were 36 by 48, it would comply.
Okay. And which we can, I can certainly work with the, the company we've been talking to with the sign signage or the size.
And that of course makes it easiest, easier to enforce it with other private signs. I mean, it's, there is argument that the municipality doesn't always need to follow its own zoning.
Correct.
Um, you know, government entities aren't, but, um, you know, it's a slippery slope when you apply that. And if you, yeah, I mean, 36 by 48 or, you know, 46 by 30 or 38, you know, whatever.
Yeah, within that parameter. Yeah.
Seems like you're not far off anyway. And, and, uh, I like the sign. I like the concept. I like the idea. You can put the sponsor's name in smaller letters. I don't have any trouble with that.
For sure that.
I was gonna say it was kind of small.
You were gonna say it was kind of small? Yeah.
I mean, four feet by four feet seems large until you stick it on the side of the road and drive by it.
Definitely, definitely.
It's pretty, it's pretty small.
I mean, our sign at the Rotary is, uh. It fits that dimension, you know, so.
We can comply with that, but I don't struggle with that.
Um. And it's, and, and it's geared towards speed limit. So theoretically along there, people are traveling at, uh, 35 miles an hour. So.
Yeah.
Have, um. You, you, people do go slower once you get on the other side of the bridge. But.
In town? Or the other side of the bridge out of town?
Into town.
Yeah.
I mean, they're coming on the first little roundabout, but I like, I like it along that stretch. Um, and I think closer to the, to the Northbrook probably makes sense. Um.
Yeah.
It's 10 feet far enough off the road to not have it get destroyed by snow getting plowed off the road.
Yeah, so. So I already. I already spoke with the highway department, um, prior to Dave, uh, leaving his position. Um. And they have volunteered to actually do the install, which once we have a replacement, I'll have to kind of reengage in that, uh, conversation. But, um. If, if 10 feet isn't the right number, I guess that's, that's part of, I know with the plot layout, we need to be pretty specific as to where we're putting it. Um, you know, if we have to go back 15 feet, I don't struggle with, you know, doing what's right to protect it too.
And who maintains it over the years? Like who owns it?
I guess we would own it.
We being.
You envision, you envision some funding coming in from these sponsors on a.
Yeah.
Some, some varied basis. So you've got some revenue that's generated. Is there a way for you to capture that and use it to? Um, redo the sign out of those funds? I probably not, right? It probably just goes into the general fund. But, um, your argument would be there that that money was generated and ought to be used for the maintenance of the sign on a periodic basis. Um, you know, the, the money comes to the town, the town ought to spend it.
Yeah, certainly.
Captured, capturing it into a special fund is a pain in the neck for June. So.
Yeah. Yeah.
The concept.
And I, I, you know, as we move forward, I mean, like I said, this is the first location as we, um. Um, put in a couple of other locations, you know, working with the agricultural committee, you know, we could talk about doing flowers underneath the signs and different things like that. Um, you know, I, I'm working on solar lights. Um, they, it will have reflective, uh, paint. So headlights will definitely kind of bounce off of it, but, um. I really think it, you know, could be a, a nice addition to the town, um, involving a couple of different committees and. Kind of give us some, a little more identity, helping out the businesses too.
Um, so you're aware that the site is on conservation land? Were you planning on talking to the conservation commission about that?
It, if I need to, I know, uh, based on how close to, uh, Northbrook. Uh, we would have to get their permission.
Well, just the land itself is conservation land, so.
Yeah. And I'll, also, you know, I know we have a hundred year lease with it, so I gotta make sure river bridges.
That's for the garden. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, the whole property, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I, I'll definitely, uh, connect with, uh, conservation.
And you are planning on illuminate, illuminating it at some point?
Yes. Yeah, I'm in the process of figuring out what solar lights would, would. Would look like.
Do we have any regulations about the number of lumens or anything that this, the, a sign can be lit at?
We just say signs may be illuminated either by backlighting internally or with shielded external light sources directed solely onto the sign. Without causing glare. So, you know. If you do what, um, I mean, it's similar in nature to what Maria did with their shell sign, which I still think works out pretty well. It's, it's legible, it's clear to see, it's, it's not a glaring light, it's, you know, it works, so.
Yeah, and I, I wasn't thinking with it having reflective paint, I, I wasn't thinking we needed to go and, and blind anybody here.
Yeah. No, it sounds good. Yeah, I mean, technically in that zone, 10 foot, 10 square feet is the allowed. Amount, I think, because it's a municipal use and 12 is a, is a limit that we've, uh. You know, we use in the commercial village zone, which is just around the, just up the road. I, I don't have trouble. With the 12 foot.
Awesome.
Are you, you thinking about this is ground mounted or on a, on a, on a post?
Uh, it'll be four by four posts.
Okay. Height is.
Uh, I think that depends on the landscape. Um. I don't think it's actually in my PowerPoint as far as how far off the ground.
Can't be any more than 16 feet, right?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Unlimited industrial. I mean, it'd probably be safer to. If it's a four-foot sign, if it's six feet off the ground, you know, you're still up 10. I mean, that, I can't imagine it being higher than that.
Yeah. No, I mean.
It wouldn't need to be.
Wouldn't need to be, like you said, yeah. You get below the freeze line with a 10-foot four-by-four post, you're not, you know. You're not coming above the ground too high.
Nice. What do you think? Down the road, four of them myself?
Yeah, we were trying, you know, I had three locations picked out, but, um. A- as I start doing some research and you start talking about private property or different things, that's, it turns into a, a little muddier, uh. Water. And so we just thought with the first sign, we would, we would try to execute through the community garden area. I think it's a great location. There's not a lot going on over there. Um, another location is right when you get off 495, um, really put in something at the bottom there. Um. And again, I had some, some brief conversations with highway department, but, um, I figured we'd work on one sign at a time. Um, we already have a sponsor for a second sign when we're ready to go. Um, so like I said, we'll work on one at a time. The sign company can turn these around in, in two weeks, once we work through approvals. So it's, it's something we can kind of do relatively quick once I figure everything out.
What's it made out of?
Uh, so it's a vi- it's wooden vinyl. So it's covered in vinyl to protect the wood. And then the paint is a whatever.
So it's just gonna be a sheet, like a, a flat, uh.
Yeah, it's not three-dimensional.
Right.
Uh, it does have the, the seal on it. Um. I was looking at some other companies that, that did a little more three-dimensional and in-depth work, but the maintenance on those is pretty significant. And the upkeep, um, the paint needs to be touched up like almost every other year. Um, you know, mother nature takes a beating on them. So we thought this would be a little bit simpler. It's still gonna look clean. It's gonna be, um. Very responsible, you know.
Oh, Peter has his hand up.
Hello, everyone. Again, I just wanted to clarify something. It loo- it looks like budget-wise. The, uh, business, the sponsor will pick up two-thirds of the tab and the town will pick up one-third. Our total costs is in the low twos per sign. So to give you a sense of how this might work out, we've got a budget of 2,000 from the previous budget cycle. And that'll cover the three signs with any luck. Um, Highland Liquors is, um, willingly committed to, uh. To assign Clinton Savings Bank as well. And Clinton would rather be in the middle of town, which makes sense. And how is, uh, is, is comfortable with. Uh, the garden location. So I just wanted to clarify that. But thankfully Jason's really shepherded this through and. It's got a lot of tentacles and, you know, as Jason said, we want to make sure that. The, uh, the folks that are involved, planning, select, finance, whoever it may be, conservation, as Carolyn pointed out. Have their chance to say what they want to say, so we can streamline this and get it approved and in the ground. It's been going on for a while.
Hey, Peter. So after they pay for, you know, a couple hundred dollars or whatever in the beginning, do they continue to pay every year to keep it their sponsor?
As Jason said, we, we kind of talked about a sign in perpetuity, a sign that would be for a year. And we finally came up with, what do we say, three or five years, Jason?
I think we set five based on. The value to the business.
Yeah. So it'll be one payment. Um, for five years and that sign is, that sign is interchangeable. And talking about signs. I, uh, I would urge everyone to consider a larger sign because we're trying to welcome. Folks that come into town and promote the business that's sponsoring the sign. So to the extent that it makes sense and if it has to be, uh, waived. I think the sign should be a larger sign because of its, its motive is to welcome motorists and visitors in, into town. Especially if it's gotta be pushed off the side of the road further because it's snow.
Maybe we should do a little homework on that because I agree with you. But we could take a look at some. Signs at size and see if we think that's appropriate. I mean, the, the drawing that you had, Jason, um, it looked like it was about 10 by 10 feet.
It did look big.
Well, I guess that would mean the person next to it was also 10 feet tall.
It's a magic sign. Put my hat off to Jason.
Yeah, but to seal.
Spending all this time working on this. Go ahead.
Great.
Um, yeah, so the, the original layout of the sign was 44 by 48, uh, one-sided. It's an inch and a half. Back, um, the town's still 12 inches, uh, by inch circle. So it is raised off of the sign. Um, and then the sponsor panel, uh. And then the sponsor panel was eight by twenty eight, which really isn't that big of a sponsor seal when you think about it. And then it is four by four posts.
Jason, do you want to bring the sign back up? So we can look at it?
There's also going forward a request on the part of Berlin Memorial School to permit a sign. On their site. Which would be. Four by six, twenty four square feet. And they've been advised to go to the ZBA for a variance which. Trying to. Argue a hardship in the creation of a new freestanding sign. The. The hardship you'd argue in order to get the variance, I think would be kind of complex, but. And and they've. They've got an LED display as part of that sign, so we're going to be faced with another municipal sign. Question. Probably given the the ZBA some advice before too long.
So is it, is it so that you have the right? To waive the sign requirement, the sign. Size requirement or is it requires EBA approval? Given that it's municipal. Or is that unclear?
Well, I think we'd we'd ask for some advice for some folks, I I've heard people argue in the past that. The municipality isn't bound, but. Like I said earlier, I. I I hate to see the town argue it doesn't need to follow its own zoning ordinances. And require its private citizens to do so, so. You know, I'm I'm sort of torn there.
Well, I've I've been pressing to get this in the ground for a long time and. I'm not suggesting that we. Promote the idea of a waiver, but at the same time. If we've got to go to the ZBA and we've still got to talk to highway, we still have to talk to select people, select board perhaps, conservation. It won't get in the ground anytime soon. Well, I'd like to suggest.
I mean, at at this point, you're, we're talking about shaving a couple inches off each dimension and you're. You're there, so. Plus, I I it's unclear to me if are you measuring the full surface, when you say forty four by forty eight with these indents is forty eight? Including the indents, so is that the? If we put a square over this piece or a forty eight by forty eight, forty four sheet?
You're gonna have some gaps, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Cut out, so.
You, to me, measure the cutout and tell us what it is, you're probably within the twelve square feet already.
Yeah, I can, I can get that answer.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't. That's the benefit of. I find the the sign more appealing this way. And and uh, and again, it doesn't. It meet, it helps you meet the requirement.
Yeah, yeah, and and. Based, you know, when you think about if it's from top to bottom. And left to right, there's a lot of cutout there, we definitely would be within your requirement, so.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So before we conclude, could the four of you opine on? What approvals or what agencies or boards or committees we require approval from?
If the planning board tells the the building inspector that you're all right, you're all right.
And you want us to go to conservation?
Well, you should out of a polite, you know, they. The land belongs to. River Bridge.
Yep.
There's a conservation restriction on it and like you've already discovered, the. Ag Commission has some authority over the garden, so. I mean, the polite thing to do is just to chat with them, but. They they don't, I wouldn't say they have veto authority. They might just want to give you some thoughts about ideal location. But basically, the planning board and the and the building inspector are the two people you need approval from.
Yeah, and building was good, he said he sent it over to you guys, so.
And do you have permission from River Bridge, they own the land?
That's on the, on the to do list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There, Matt.
I'll I'll be reaching out to Matt when we get a little bit closer.
They're not gonna say no.
No, I actually offered him the sponsorship.
Yeah.
You know. And he declined, but so he, they're aware of the sign and what we're thinking, so.
All right, so we're gonna stay within the the size limits, we're gonna check on conservation.
Yeah, I'll confirm that we're under the twelve feet or twelve square feet, you know. And then I'll I'll check in with conservation, I'll see when their next meeting is and see if I can join them.
Our next meeting is tomorrow night, but the agenda is full. So it'll be two weeks.
Next month, or two weeks.
Yeah, actually, this is the last, so it, the first week of October, I think it's the fifth maybe.
Okay.
So you just send me an email at conservation at town of Berlin.
That's right, at the beginning, you were saying you had a meeting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You got it.
So do you want us to come back to you or do you want to vote on? An approval subject to or what's best for the planning board?
I'll make a motion that we advise the building inspector that we're we're compatible with the development of this sign. At twelve square feet and and in a location that he and the highway department and conservation are. Are. On board with, how about that?
Works for me.
And budget wise, do we need your approval?
Does the EDC need our approval to expend the money? What did it say at town meeting? What'd your warrant article say, to be expended by the planning board?
Probably.
Yeah, so after we do this motion, we'll do another one.
The only thing I would like to add to that before I second it for you is. That any illumination, I would just like to have some input. On. Any, anything other than what this is. Just appreciate coming back and talking about it.
You got it.
So if we can add that to the motion, I will second it.
I'm fine.
Hey, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. JT.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion that the. Economic Development Committee be allowed to expend, what, up to two thousand, is that what you got, Peter?
That's right.
Up to two thousand dollars on the creation of. As. What are you talking about, three?
Yes.
Three signs?
Yep.
You know, up to the three signs. The first of which to be located at. River Road. West. Near the. Community Garden and. Any additional signs. You'll have a conversation with the planning board and the highway superintendent about location for those.
Great.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. For expenditures of money for signs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
JT.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Carries unanimously, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we. Request in their, the for the annual town meeting. Budget. I mean, the the annual budget to be voted on at the annual town meeting. How much money do you need, Peter, you want? Five hundred, a thousand, two thousand, ten thousand, what what was it you wanted?
Well, given the way Jason spends money, we better go ten or twenty thousand.
Conservation only gets two.
I would say. A rainy rainy day, one or two thousand would be adequate. So. If your comfort level is two thousand and it doesn't sunset.
Well, it sunsets. Because it's not a, it's it's just a line for the year. Why don't we throw fifteen hundred on the table and see what the 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 powers that be throw back at us, I mean, they may. Say we're trying to get everybody to shave a little, but. We don't want to give you more money than we've got, but.
Does the current two thousand sunset on July and June thirtieth?
So what, did we, did we put money in last year?
Yes.
And you got two?
Yes.
Yeah, it disappeared, well. Was it a, was it a? An article?
What's the alternative definition?
Well, I'll look into that.
Because if it sunsets, we should may, we should move to extend it because we probably won't get three signs in. By July first.
That article, the two thousand for the signage is is an article for a specific expenditure that will hold, that won't disappear. But if we put money into.
Budget.
Budget. Although I'm trying, I mean, the planning board. We end up. Well, no, our expenses, that disappears.
Yes.
The the money that we ask for printing and stuff like that stays around because those are articles that are unique, okay, yeah. So what we'd be asking for is is you to be given an expense line. Of, you know, fifteen hundred dollars or something like that, and that would disappear on an annual basis, but it'd be available for you to use for. You know, if you wanted to do some printing of brochures or handouts or flyers or some.
Right, right, right.
Stuff like that, you'd be able to do that.
All right, that sounds good, so you don't think the current two thousand will sunset?
No, I'll check, but that should be a. Article for a specific use that until it's done is continuing, you know.
Or if you find out differently, then perhaps we should make it. Make an adjustment or proposed an adjustment to that language. All right, super, thanks.
So is that a motion for fifteen hundred dollars, Tim?
That was a motion. Yes, sir.
For an annual budget for EDC?
Well, yeah, for 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 expense for. Twenty twenty. Three. Is that right?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Fifteen hundred dollars in expenses for EDC. Any further discussion?
Carolyn, do we need to put a lumens limit on that budget line? I'm just pulling your leg.
Wise guy, yeah. How about that?
Five lumens, that's it. Jason, you heard it.
I heard it.
Any? Local bee honey advertisements attached to this, are there?
I will not be sponsoring our own signs. Anybody that sees my bees anywhere near your plants, be thankful. And you can recognize them, they all say hi.
Yeah. They all have a little pH.
Okay, no further discussion, I'll ask you to vote. JT.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I appreciate you guys' time.
Likewise, thank you.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, this is good.
This is cool. Carolyn, I'll shoot you an email. Conservation and get on your next agenda.
Awesome.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's all the items that are on the agenda and now we have anything for. Timely consideration. Us to consider. I, Jay, are you all set for, well, first of all, let me, are you all set for? Stuff for Ron's party or do we need to? We need to bring.
Oh, yeah, we need a capital appropriation.
Capital appropriation.
Couple thousand.
Couple thousand.
Uh, no, I think we're in good shape, but I'll. Communicate with you guys. When we get closer.
Okay.
About the pizza ovens, that's the main thing. So pizza competition.
So you want. You want tomatoes and peppers and.
Oh, yeah.
And all that stuff?
Oh, corn would be awesome, yeah, sure.
Yeah, so. I mean, we could. I can bring along all that, actually, the like. Peppers I could cut up ahead of time, so people could just throw them on.
Sate them first.
Oh, Jesus, Marion Joe.
Well, you can bring your own.
Sate them for you.
You can bring your own secret ingredients to try.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I was wondering if you, because I was thinking maybe I'd make some fresh ricotta.
Yeah, there you go. But um, yeah, I I'll bring, we'll gather up some stuff.
I wonder if you could do the, my brother, when he he was down to the Cape for a long weekend and he did one meal he wanted to make himself, so he. He did all kinds of, but he did grilled Chicago street corn. Chicago style, yeah.
Sweet corn?
Street corn, so what's the difference between Chicago and Mexican?
He, it was all like butter and lime juice all over it.
Yeah. It was. And par- and Parmesan cheese?
No, you didn't use that.
Oh, you didn't do the parm.
He's a fan of that.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
With the, with the lot, with fresh squeezed lime on it.
So did you have to prep it ahead of time and marinate it or just?
No, no, no.
Go on, do it.
No, he just, he, he took all but like two of the husks, cleaned the silks off. But he had stripped it down, so there was like two layers and then grilled it. And then peeled it and served it butter with with the lime juice squeezed on top of it. It was really good.
Sounds awesome.
Very good, yeah.
How many people are coming to this?
Well, there's the five of us plus Ron, and then if everybody brings. An additional person, that would be, it doesn't, right?
Okay. Good.
Sounds good, I'm looking forward to this.
Awesome, I know, it's gonna be great.
Yes, it will be. Okay, that was my timely item, Tim, you had a timely item?
Yeah, didn't I?
At this point, do we anticipate any? Articles for the annual town meeting?
Annual or special?
Annual. Special, oh my god. Yeah, let's, quick, let's write some, write some warrant articles right now.
We're either going back or forward, either way.
You know, we might want to do, I remember we talked, I don't know, six months ago or something about. The idea of alternatives to onsite affordable housing. Like, I'm talking about tonight, so we were talking about how it's becoming popular, I think. Maybe to allow. Like what we're being proposed with now is two things, it's offsite. And it's also change in the type and number of units, but then the other thing. That we would consider would be cash, you know, some kind of in kind. And. Maybe by the town, the time of next annual town meeting, you know, we could have. Worked on that a little bit and decided whether it's something we want to include or not.
Yeah, and now that we're part of this consortium, those towns all have language that deals with. Inclusion, I know Bolton and. And Lancaster were talking about their. Inclusionary bylaws today and. Lancaster was asking Bolton whether the influx of. Comprehensive permits that they've seen in the last. Year. Has anything to do with the language that's in their inclusionary zone and Lancaster's is the same as Bolton, so. Lancaster was saying, boy, if you're being overrun by forty bees, are we about to, because of the. Language that we share. But all those towns are seeing big, big housing projects being proposed. I mean, Bolton's got, you know, over two hundred unit projects being proposed. Stowe does.
These are under ten percent. Are they?
Pardon?
Is that because they're under ten percent?
Um, the, the reason they're looking at them in, in Bolton's case is that, yeah, Bolton is under, Harvard is under.
Oh, really?
Hudson is, Hudson is above. Bolton is lousy. I mean, it's like less than five. It may be less than.
And they still have so many large tracts of land.
Yeah. Yeah. So they're looking at this housing, this apartment complex, the same way we did at River Bridge.
Right. So it's two hundred units in one project.
Yep.
Wow. Talk about changing the character of the town, huh?
And why for that office space is right off of, uh, one seventeen.
Right. I mean, it's right on four ninety-five.
Oh, it's right there.
And it, it's adjacent to their, their elderly, uh, housing anyways. So it's not really all that bad, but it's just significant.
Sure. That's huge.
But I mean, it's, you know, we've got two hundred at River Bridge. So, you know, it's
Yeah, true.
Stowe, Stowe Acres Country Club. Is that what?
Yeah.
One of those, one of those, um, golf courses is being developed with, with, uh, housing. But the, the part that I appreciated hearing, and I thought I'd get in touch with, his name is Jesse Stedman. He's the planner. All these towns have planners too. I'm thinking, are we talking to the town administrator here? Or, whoa, no, no, wait a minute. These are the town planners that are participating in these discussions. Stowe is, they talked about workforce housing as one component, part of the housing mix that's in this project at the, at the golf course. So I thought, okay, we, we got to look at that language. And then Devon's, um, today talked about, and they used the workforce housing term. Um, and I thought, ha ha, you know, there's, it's becoming the vocabulary of a number of towns around us. So we could pursue that and, and, uh, steal from their language, um, if it makes sense. So.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially now that we do have a little bit of a cushion with the affordables.
Well, i- if, did you guys get the census data?
Yeah, that's great.
Good. And you were commenting on it. I mean, the housing number is way below, and it doesn't include any of the River Bridge's apartments. And, and there's another fifty units that aren't on there either, which I'm not sure where they're, why they're not.
Huh.
But I mean, we're, instead of, I figured we might be like sixteen fifty for total number of housing units and we're only at thirteen thirty-five or something like that. So we only need a hundred and, you know, thirty-five affordable units and we already had a hundred and twenty and we've just added eighty with River Bridge. So, you know, we're over two hundred. And we, and so we're, we're, our cushion is, you know, probably close to seventy. Um, so that's far more than I ever thought we'd, we'd be at. I mean, it's, it's sense because we've, we have more housing units than that. But for the next ten years, we're going to live with the thirteen thirty-five number for housing units in regard to the SHI. So actually with the project on, uh, South Street that Rhodes is doing and Vinicasa's project with ten, you know, you know, will, will actually increase the number of affordable units that we've got. Um, and granted, we're seeing some small five house, house subdivisions here and there. That's going to skew it the other way, but, uh,
but you know, we, so we're getting a hundred percent of the River Bridge units to count because they're rentals, right?
Yep.
I predict that's going to change. I can't imagine they're going to change it retroactively. But
They can.
Everybody's doing the same, you know, the same thing. And I'm guessing that wasn't really the intent. Right?
Actually, it was.
Was it to get?
Yes. And it really, it, it wasn't so much for odd sized towns. It was for like Framingham and Natick and some of those other municipalities to jump over the limit quickly. So they encouraged that, the state, uh, and car- state legislature encouraged that.
Well, but I wonder whether they anticipated that so many of these, of these, um, rentals were going to be, you know, pretty expensive. Though, it was going to be almost all rentals to get added and they're going to be expensive. Most of them are going to be expensive.
Well.
I'm just guessing it's not.
It's, it's a quick hit though. So you're not dropping a big subdivision on a town. You're dropping a, a building that's dense. And that's, they, they would give it, it's the carrot.
No, I mean, it's just, but rentals versus, like, so the, the thing that seems odd is that all of the units qualify even though they're not um, below market rate, right? That's kind of the odd thing that I'm guessing is, is going to go away. Cause I don't think.
It will go away at some point, but right, what my understanding was is that was the, the, the carrot that they were using to get these, you know, uh, municipalities up to scratch fairly quick.
Oh, yeah, maybe. Yeah.
The, the state really wanted to see the construction of apartments.
Hmm.
Because
Rentals. Yeah.
Uh, they, they were, they were more short with apartments than they were with housing, single-family housing units.
Oh, it could have been condos, right? It could have been the same buildings, just sold, not rented. But kind of odd that.
Well, a lot of the apartment buildings went condo in the eighties.
That's right. That's true. And so what they tried to do is, is to diversify their stock, but there also is language in there that won't let them convert them to condo units. They got to stay apartments.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, you, when you look at the towns east of us that have successfully gotten over ten percent as a result of using apartments, the politics to try to undo that language on the state level is not there. It Framingham, Newton.
No, but even if it wasn't, assuming it's not retroactive, that we're, you know, we're good.
Yeah.
They're going forward. They say, hey, well, wait a minute.
Right. It would be going.
Massive number of apartments and we're not making any more.
They won't, they won't take that away from.
You don't think so?
No.
Cause it would throw people like Natick and Framingham and some of these other mall borough underneath the limit. And they're going to say, wait a minute, we did all this work to get over one.
No, no, but I'm saying not retroactive. I'm saying they, that at a point going forward.
Agreed. At some point in time going forward, it won't be there.
They might decide rentals aren't going to do it. And then there's going to be, you know, a whole new, you know, I think all these towns like Bolton are going to have a different thing that they
Yeah.
do. I don't know what it's going to be.
But given all of that, I think maybe focusing some of our attention on encouraging workforce housing would be worthy.
Yep.
It's a need.
It's a need and I think it's important. As important as the affordable.
Evy's interested in, in this topic and I told her I'd go to, uh, Concord to look at Riverwalk next week. But I'll check in with Stedman and those other guys and see what they've got in their language. Cause if, yeah, if we started looking at that, now we could, uh, polish something up. So by February, we might be in a position to put it on the warrant.
Awesome.
Great.
And Central Mass is going to give us a proposal for the housing production plan. Um, what the costs would be and stuff. So.
Super.
Good.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford. Aye. Motion to adjourn carries unanimously.